You guys ready?
Yes.
Okay. Well, welcome to the February sixth meeting of the Nibley City Planning Commission here at Nibley City Hall. We'll just go ahead and start with Goldcock. Commissioner Rebound, let's get started.
Okay. Let's see.
Nick Kinska, and also I'd like to have staff introduce themselves.
Levi Roberts, City Planner.
Tom Dickinson, City Engineer.
Taylor Kilpak, Assistant Recorder.
You can also like to recognize Mayor Davis.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's get started. So the first item is to review the agenda. And with that, members of the commission, I'd like to make a motion actually to amend tonight's agenda before you to remove items two and four due to specific aspects of these individual items that have yet to be resolved between the city council and city staff that quite frankly fall out of purview of the planning commission. So that's my motion. Can we state it again if you'd like?
So we just want what?
Basically, somebody needs to second me to discuss.
I'll take it.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Rebound. Any discussion?
Yeah, what's what's the explanation?
So essentially, just some new information has come to light between the proponent and city council and staff. And frankly, until that information becomes more clear, that really goes beyond the scope of the planning commission, really needs to be handled at the city council and staff level. I just don't really feel comfortable discussing those items. So that's reasonable. And frankly, for me, like until that information gets resolved with the council staff level, I would recommend that these items stay on our agenda. It's more clear.
So we still have a little curious.
So so when we vote, if if the vote were to pass, we would just remove items two and four, and we'd still have the public.
The the staff, any thoughts or comments on there will be agenda items?
Nothing more than what Nick has stated. Oh. Do you have anything?
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor? Okay, that's any opposed? Okay, the motion passes five to zero. Okay, with that, I would like to, we'll go to the next item, approval of last meeting's minutes. And I'll just ask for, and well, and a new and a new agenda for tonight. So I'll just ask for general consensus for the meeting minutes prior to tonight's meeting, January sixteenth, twenty twenty five, and then also to the amended. Okay, great. So with that, we'll move to item number one on the agenda, which is a public hearing for ordinance twenty five seven amending nineteen to Nibley City Code nineteen twelve forty mixed use residential zone RM and adding a five point two acre portion of parcels three two two seven zero zero two and three two two seven zero zero one, approximately located at fourteen twenty five west, twenty six hundred south, two eight morning. Before we get started on the public comment period, I'd like to ask Levi to discuss the case, please. Thank you.
Yep. So just a little background on this, as as stated in the agenda, the applicant's proposing to rezone a piece of property about five point two acre portion. It affects a couple of parcels, primarily zero three two two seven zero 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 two, and then there's a little bit that crosses over in zero zero one from that commercial zone to mixed residential. There, there, there's the two items on the agenda because of this restriction within the RM zone, which only allows for a limited area to to apply for the RM zone as 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 we're aware of. So the code amendment and and it kind of accompanies this this rezone consideration. The the proponent has provided a a concept plan. And this this reflects a portion of an existing preliminary plat application for a town home development that would be, you know, if if this rezone were approved, they they've they've indicated that that, you know, that would be the the purpose of the rezone, you know, why they're why they're asking for the RM zoning is for the, you know, to extend that that town home development on the existing RM zone, which which is just to the east of this property. A little bit more back background and kind of history, this property was recently rezoned from R two residential to commercial on June eighth, twenty twenty three. And there there was a rezone application for that one. So that was, you know, about a year and a half ago, that was that was done. And this also includes a portion of area that that was recently approved for Nibley Marketplace Concept Plan, which was in April last year. Just gonna state some of the things that are in the application of from the applicant. So what is the need for the zone change, change residential to join the residential RM zone to the east? Will the public benefit be create more for more first time home buyer housing opportunities? How does proposal comply with general goals and policies of Nibley City General Plan? Housing opportunities? Please explain how anticipated use is appropriate for surrounding area. Have residential RM zone to the east and commercial to the west? And then what public infrastructure is in place to serve the type and intensity of proposed use? If needed, could the infrastructure be reasonably extended at the cost of the property owner and developer? And they stated Heritage Drive needs to be built for the commercial development. That needs to be coordinated with Nelson Farms, the commercial developer, and the city TIF. But just to just so we see kind of where we're talking about that red area is the, you know, the proximate RM zoned area or the proposed RM zoned area. The the tan is the current currently RM zoned area. So you can see kind of the context around there just to the north is, you know, Standard as well as Mountain View Machine Machinery and, you know, other other light industrial and commercial uses. And then, you know, to the south and really on all other sides immediately is currently agricultural uses. But that's kind of the context there. And then, you know, I reference some plans that are in the works right now. So this is just kind of as a backdrop, you can see their their current draft of their preliminary plat, which, you know, within that red area is what they what they provided for this application. So this is kind of what is intended from the applicant for for this area to develop as as, you know, folded into that that town home development to the east. And then this is just overlaid, looking at that commercial development that was previously approved for a concept plan, that you could see, you know, some commercial pads in there, an office to the north. That's that's just to give a little more context of of where we're looking at, how this how this folds together. And then, looking at the general plan, when we look at the future land use map, it's listed as commercial and medium to high density residential. Some goals that are that are relevant is encouraged, land use goal one is encourage development that respects and preserves character of the city and provides a mix of commercial, residential, housing, and some light industrial uses, carefully planned for growth within the city, ensure the development occurs in suitable locations and can be efficiently served over the long term. Land use goal two is guide land use and growth decisions through application of the general plan, future land use map, and relevant goals, principles, and projects. And commercial and economic development goal two is to create and maintain a sustainable economic base for Nibley City that will provide tax revenues and increase local employment and convenience of shopping. And then if you look at principle two A, it's to improve, diversify, and increase Nibley's tax base, seek revenue growth from economic development activities to mitigate residential property tax increases that may be required to offset increased level of service costs. So just some things to consider, looking at our general plan, looking at the context of the area. Really, when you look at our future land use map, I think there's an argument to be made that both the existing zoning, you know, which is commercial, and the proposed zoning of RM is is consistent with future land use map. When we think about commercial and medium to high density residential. The the general plan encourages a mix of commercial, residential, light industrial uses. And, you know, on the one hand, the Modern Income Housing Plan includes strategy to consider areas to rezone for densities necessary to facilitate production of modern income housing, which, you know, that that can definitely be seen as a reason for approval for of of this. However, when you think about the limited areas in Nibley that are that are available to support viable commercial and economic development, and this area, you know, with its proximity to the highway, with Heritage Drive, there twenty twenty six hundred south, really has the potential to support access for commercial development. You know, access directly on the highway is limited, but the but Heritage Drive, there's there's more opportunity to access commercial businesses. And and really with the the recent application, it's apparent that there is potential, you know, it it it's understood that market conditions change and but but there is potential for some kind of commercial development on on this property. I I think I think that's apparent with with the application that was submitted. And just considering the context of of the area, the, you know, the proximity to other commercial businesses in the area. And so it is staff's recommendation to deny, and and this this does relate to item two and to item four, which I understand are not going to be considered tonight, but related to the public hearing, staff's staff's recommendation is to recommend denial of of both of these app or both of these items, both these ordinances.
Do we have anyone signed up for public? Other comment?
I did list the findings, but I I won't rehash those. They really just summarize what what I've already stated.
None? Okay, we didn't have anyone sign up for a public comment, but if anyone would like to approach the mic and state your name and address, we'll just limit all public comments to three minutes. Thirty five seconds.
Yeah, this this is right in line with what's been happening here. So, hey, you know, it's part of the council meeting and the public details, but the the challenge we have in here is is the commercial was proposed last year on that agreement. And that agreement expired. And so, you know, it is what it is, we have to do something with it. And so there is a plan in there, we are putting it all together. And yes, this area will be, something dramatic changes will be, you know, we'll have to work through this. So we we try to get this heard and get this thing going, because we got the preliminary plaque coming in too. So there's there's several different pieces going on with the property. Obviously, we have the church located on the other side on that place in center south and south west. So we've kind of got to get put put these things through. So that's really what's going on there. We'll have to say on this day, but yeah, the the application we inherited, the intent is is true. It's accurate, anyway.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? State your name and address, please.
Hey, this is Dirk Howard. I own the properties at twenty four ninety south, thirteen fifty west, majestic mountain sage, which is just to the north of the current RM zoned area. I was here during those discussions, and I feel that they were well thought out and heard. At the time, we were talking about keeping the areas that were currently listed as commercial as commercial, as a commercial owner area, a little hesitant to have more RM be put into that area because we're already having a very unclear level of vehicle impact by that high level of occupancy. And I think that we should keep this reserved as commercial, light industrial, because I think that's still the best fit for that Heritage Drive corridor. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Please state your name and address. Thank you.
So partly, I'm a brother in law, so.
Yeah, I don't need to, can you hold the mic while there just are people online so they can hear you?
Yeah, there's a there's a, I think there's a couple people online, or at least one person online, so he can hear you.
These two buildings right here, and before Dirk moved in from construction, owned his building and big man is the seller. Well, right in this corner, the canal runs and goes underground. Right here, there's a big break in front, and the canal never get a lot of cleanup in it. So it would fill up, and if the water flowed between the fence line and the residents that used this property had a little double fence where cattle would run down it and go slip off the bank. Well, that water would go here and run over and almost up to my front door. And if you guys are planning on, if that was getting that, what happens to that wall? Because if done three or four times since I've been here, it might be that.
I think you guys can settle, you guys can discuss. Yeah. Is that all you have? Thank you, appreciate it. Does anyone have any other comments on this agenda item? Okay, we'll put we'll close item number one, public hearing, and go to now new item number two, which is a additional public hearing for ordinance twenty five eight, rezone of a five point two acre portion of parcels three two two seven zero zero two and three two two seven zero zero one, located at fourteen twenty five west, twenty six hundred south, from commercial to mixed residential. Levi has already basically described the project. I don't think we have anyone signed up on the sheet for public comment. So again, I'd like anyone to go ahead and make a comment. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Once again, my name is Dirk Howard. I own the property with Justin Sage at twenty four ninety south, thirteen fifty west. Once again, I'm going to reiterate that I believe keeping the posed commercial zone makes more sense for those of us that are already there and also for ongoing city development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment on this on this item? Okay, well, thank you for everyone for your comments. We'll move on to now the new item number three, which is a workshop amongst the planning commission for the mixed use residential zone. Levi, you want to get us kind of caught up here?
Yeah, I mean, we had we had a a good, you know, long discussion about this at the last meeting. There wasn't clear direction on what where to go with with the RM zone. Like I said, a lot of good discussion about, you know, everything from whether whether it should be, you know, legislative decision or like a P U D, what, oh, different different items there, and we can we can go over those. But I would say it would be most helpful if out of this discussion, we could get some direction, whether we're pursuing an amendment to the RM zone. If so, what are some things that should be considered before that into a draft? Okay, we'll pu- we'll close item number one. Public hearing, we go to now new item number two, which is a additional public hearing. Uh, ordinance twenty-five eight, rezone of a five point two acre portion of parcels three, two-two-seven zero-zero-two and three, two-two-seven zero-three-one, located at fourteen twenty-five west, twenty-six hundred south. From commercial to mixed residential. Levi's already basically described the project. Um, I don't think we have anyone signed up on the sheet for a public comment. So again, I'd invite anyone to go ahead and make a comment. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Uh, once again, my name is Dirk Howard. I own the property with Justin Sage at, uh, seven thirteen fifty west. Once again, I'm going to reiterate that I believe keeping the posed commercial zone makes more sense for those of us that are already there and also for ongoing city development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment on this, on this item? Okay. Well, thank you for every, everyone, um, for your comments. Um, we'll move on to now the new no, item number three, which is a workshop amongst the planning commission for the, uh, mixed use residential zone. Levi, you want to get us kind of caught up here?
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had a, a, a good, you know, long discussion about this at the last meeting. Um, there wasn't clear direction on what, where to go, uh, with, with the RM zone. Um, like I said, a lot of good discussion about, you know, everything from whether, whether it should be uh, you know, legislative decision or like a P U D, um, what uh, uh, different, different items there and we can, we can go over those, but I would say it would be most helpful if out of this discussion, we could get some direction. Whether we're pursuing an amendment to the RM zone. If so, what are some things that should be considered before that into a draft? Uh, if not, what, what direction we should go with, with this. So that's, that's what I would like to get out of this discussion. I mentioned that there are a couple, you know, two or three things that this city staff has, has noted that could be improved with, with the ordinance. But really the whole purpose of this, uh, you know, came from a, a, uh, an annexation and rezone request for, for RM that you know, was, was recommended for denial and, and that there was some need to clean up the ordinance. And so if, if we could just get some, some direction from the planning commission of, of where to go with, with, with this. I know there's, there's a lot of different directions that we could go. Uh, that would be helpful. Yeah.
Open up our discussion.
Welcome Commissioner Laurie. Uh, just to keep you up to speed Tyler, we amended the original agenda to remove items two and four. Um, until further discussion between council and staff. And so we just had our, uh, public hearings and now we're on the, uh, RM motion. So welcome to the meeting.
Troy, do you have anything to do with starting?
I have this.
Great.
So I I'll start by saying that I, I completely agree with staff's request. We, we did have a proponent, um, asked for the zone change and we said that we're going to look at this and get back to them. Uh, and so I, I, I think at the very least, we should find suggestions to staff. Whether we make changes or we just delete the zone altogether. Uh, I think we should keep the zone and make some changes. Um, so I do have a list of things as I studied. Start zone. Um, I'll start off with the two recommendations that uh, staff suggested. Uh, I, I do agree. I believe that the, uh, item net of nineteen twelve forty, uh, which is the map, that should be removed altogether. Then, uh, on the other item, that was suggested by staff on alleyways, uh, which is, uh, section I, um, I, I do agree that we should limit driveway width. Whatever that is, we need to, uh, stat, that fall, um, I, I don't I don't think that we should force alleyways. I think, I think we can kind of drive that harder by limiting the distance between driveways, like a minimum distance between driveways of like thirty feet or something like that. Which, uh, kind of forces it to hand as you get those tighter garage spaces. Um, and then if, if the distance is less than that, whatever say thirty feet, uh, would need to be resolved by either a shared driveway or an, uh, to create that uh, rear loaded park. Um, along with that, um, item seven on section audit. Now, that section just talks about multi-family. Uh, I think that should be renewed and just applied to all housing in general. So single family, multi-family, um, where driveways are less than whatever distance. Uh, you gotta share our driveway or do a rear loaded alley. I, I would just say I leave that up to staff. That's their expertise on coming up with numbers. Yeah. That it? I have other things, but those are the two, okay, from what staff's, uh, recommendations. We go, you go in and just, all right. Uh, yeah, hey, uh, I'm gonna kind of go and talk about a quarter. Section B, uh, section B. Uh, just talks about definitions and refers multiple different other pages. Um, in section A, it talks about providing a plenty of thousand plates. Uh, if you look through section B, those two sections that are records, um, they provide definitions. And there's only a minimal definition provided for these variety of housing types. Which I don't know if it's factual, but I feel as developers, they might go to those definitions, look at them and say, these are the only things that are defined. These are the only things I'm allowed to build. So I think adding additional definitions for things such as stack triplexes, stack fourplexes, multiplexes, courtyard buildings. That work mixed use storefront residential kind of living, uh, uh, units, just kind of puts a definition there and shows that it's not, uh, option that's not opted. Uh, going down to section D, uh, setbacks. Um, I think if we're gonna try and push rear loaded parking, uh, I think setbacks need to be reduced, right, for the garage that are in the back. So reducing setbacks to five feet, I think. Um, section G um, talks about if there's going to be multi-family units, there needs to be a buffer with a single family houses or a load or three or four open space. Um, I think in a sense, a negative connotation with multi-family housing. Um, and in turn, that same negative connotation to the families that live there. Just saying these are bad housing. These are bad people who find them far away from our current residence. This is a bad message. Um, so I, for the buffer, I think, um, if we feel it's necessary for like neighborhood compatibility or if, if there's going to be like a stark contrast between the type of housing. Um, I think rather than like requiring like a single family buffer, you could just say that multi-family buildings that are near single family homes, um, uh, need to be required to have, uh, you know, same kind of like pitch roofs and setbacks and other architectural elements to make it look like hardly existing. That way you don't separate these kind of housing units from the current housing units. But you still get that same kind of look and feel as you would with the, with a buffer of single family housing. Um, a couple more, y'all, keep going, sure. Um, section H, um, uh, I don't, I, I believe in sport, uh, the open space requirement. Uh, I, again, I don't think we need to discriminate against different housing types. If we're going to require open space, just keep it simple. Here's the open space required regardless of that. Um, whatever it is, this is for you. And then, uh, section H two, uh, the amenities. Uh, I think removing the pub house, pools, black flat requirement. Um, as a city, we're, we're really pushing for, uh, indoor rec center. This kind of goes against those code, right, we're saying you want to pay more taxes for indoor rec center, but we're going to force you to pay higher H W Ps for your one little personal rec center. Just doesn't feel that. There's less.
Awesome. Thank you. Brett, any thoughts? Tyler? Uh, yeah, we also need to make calls.
I'm curious about G three, so I think I mentioned this before in time machine. So if someone wants to build four flats, seeing your end of day living.
They could in this zone. Yeah, they couldn't, they could in this zone. Um.
So that's really.
Right. Or, or an R P U D. In an R P U D overlay zone, you could build something like that. Um, what number three is, is saying is that if you have a patio home, so on, on a single family lot, but it's less than forty-five hundred square feet, or it doesn't meet the setback requirements, it's, it's essentially considered multifamily. And, and you have to meet, it really, in, in this case, it just relates to the open space requirement, which, you know, Troy, Troy mentioned, it's twenty percent for single family, it's thirty-five percent for multifamily. So once you get to kind of those small, single family lots or, you know, patio home type lot, uh, it's considered multifamily for those purposes. That's really the only reason for that.
Thank you.
So I guess if you went with what Troy suggested, you could probably just strike that as well, but, yeah.
There. Going off what Troy said. Um, residential mixed residential at the height of fifty feet, so you could have a, a town hall. Ten feet collar, twenty feet collar, that is residential, single family. They have a height limit of thirty feet.
Actually forty, yeah.
For an R two. So, and that's my, that'd be an issue, yeah, I could consider. Check time. And also the front lot for a commercial or residential, it's rated only twenty feet setback. Single family is thirty feet. Setback from, and the side is further for mixed residential thirty feet, it only can for single family. So you'd have to, if you wanted to blend in, you have to change balance every. So, I don't know how you don't know the good number is to do that, so that makes.
Yeah, it's, I, Levi can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's already covered in the code. Uh, if you look under the commercial section, um, there's a note that says, um, it basically says like, with like residential, you, you do whatever is the most restrictive. So if commercial is twenty feet and residential thirty feet, uh, if there would be commercial in the RM zone, then you would do the more restrictive, so it would be the thirty feet. Uh, I have to go look for the section.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not quite sure if I know which, which one you're referring to. Um, I know that, I, I, I know that there is in the commercial zone, there's a a requirement for increased setback. I don't, is it, is that what you're referring to? So that was, that was past a few years ago. Where if, if it's a commercial zone, a budding residential, eh, the, the setbacks increase to thirty feet and then it goes up to forty, the, the maximum height's forty feet. So up to forty foot setback, if it, for example, if you have a forty foot building. I don't know if, I don't know if that's what you're referring to, uh.
Been a while and if you don't have.
Yeah.
But I, I know I'm
Yeah, that, I'm sure there's something to that. I'm just not sure what, what it is. Mm-hmm. Yeah, and you could do something similar here, I guess. Right. I mean, I guess you could say similar to commercial, if it abuts a residential, you know, a another residential zone, you could, you could say something like, well, that increases the setback and it, uh, uh, if, if, if it's a higher building, then it has to be set back even further, you know, something like that. You could, you could do something like that. If, if you wanted to, you know, as, as, uh, Troy suggested, change the, the buffer requirement, you know, the three hundred foot buffer, arterial road buffer requirement, that's something else you could do.
Is there a state code different for townhomes versus condominiums? Like a back entrance through alley and it's, it's point a little bit. Uh, or the, can you, can you add an entrance from the front?
I mean, I think as far as the, like, the building code or, or anything state code, there's, there's there's different designs you can go with. I know, uh, and, and we, we went over this with the prior version of like, uh, Wesley Nelson Farms, one of, one of their proposals to be considered a, a town home by the building code. You do have to have the front and the back open. It, uh, it can't be just, just open air, right? Um, as far as the entrance goes, there's some things in city code that, that point to how to orient the entrances and, and such, but I, I'm not aware of anything in state code.
They can do a shared driveway and go wider. Having several twenty foot drives.
Yeah, we, we have pretty clear standards and, and the current standards right now. It restricts driveway width to twenty-four feet. It's so common though, that people just come in and cut the thirty-two feet or forty feet, add another driveway. It's just if, if we could maybe just keep them off the public roads, it'd be a lot less enforcement later. For park, for the driveway, because you're going to say it's a shared driveway, but then they're just going to come back later and add another one or, or widen the one they have. It just becomes an enforcement issue.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm like concerned. There's too many driveways that makes garbage and stolen mobile.
But, but I do think Troy had a good point on the setbacks. If we're going to push rear loaded, maybe a twenty foot setback's a little, a little high for, for townhomes, may, maybe. I mean, I don't know if I, I don't know what the right number is, but maybe a ten foot setback, um, would be, would be appropriate. Mm-hmm.
Plus with T D R, you can get up to twenty. I, I think the original zoning was twenty, it's an acre. And then the T R came in a couple of years ago, which allowed, which could allow up to twenty. Right back to where it used to be. But the hell, the housing needs there, it's going to come. Are we gonna make more road that we have to maintain? Are we going to make less roads with higher density? It's just a, who knows that? It's a tough, tough discussion.
Yeah.
He still searches for some direction for staff, it feels like.
Yeah, I mean Troy, Troy had some points. I don't, I don't know if anyone agree, agrees with them or, or.
Yeah, it feels like critiquing the existing RM zone, really talking about the real context of like, I, I know this, the genesis of this discussion, right, came from us considering applying the RM zone in an uncomfortable area that we weren't maybe ready to in terms of geographically in the city, right? And I think, um, for me personally, it's kind of like, you know, the, the step from R two A to what would be higher density through T D R or what this zone in R P U D. And there's like nothing in between. And I, I don't know if that, if that's something that, are we really trying to address that context here? Or are we really just trying to decide we don't like, all right? And feel like we're low. So, or is this a hit reach site for?
No. Yeah. You could, I mean technically, as writ- as written, yes. Yes.
Happy to reiterate some of Tyler's, and I don't want to speak for you Tyler, so certainly come be honest, speak for yourself. But I think some of Tyler's reservation were, um, what we miss out on applying our, in our inverse of like R P U D, some of that. Working with the city to figure out infrastructure and making sure the project blows and things like that. So I think really, I think what we're really trying to discuss here is like size, size and what makes sense, you know, like, do we want to entertain a zone like this in a, in a parcel that's less than ten acres? Or do we really need to think about how to bridge that gap from the traditional R two A with higher densities through T D R and different And higher densities through TDR and different bonuses through open space and all that, to literally going from something like that to. A zone like this, I don't really know. We don't really have much in code as far as zoning to address like the tier, the tier of how we get there. So, I don't know if that would make more sense if we discussed as a, as a group, or maybe, really what I make sure is that staff. Has some direction after the night. We just need to decide as a commission, we wanna leave RM as is, and we'll just. Make sense, or do we legitimately want to do something about? Figuring out how to bridge the gap from. The density you can get through TDR. And in in the lights, and in a site size that makes sense, like twenty acres or. Really just need to make sure that staff has some direction from us, otherwise, we should just table it.
So, if you look at. Six H two, right, there's the amenity table. If they just own one unit, they're required a one and a half acre park. So.
Good point.
That that does force the developer, at some point, there's gonna be a small enough acreage that just doesn't make sense. So. Uh, and it's gonna be at least two acres, right, like you're gonna need some room for houses and then one and a half acres. So. There's not a minimum acreage, but it's kind of self composed. And then to answer Nick's question of. Do we like this or not, I am, I am a hundred percent for the RM zone, I think. Even if we left it unchanged, I think it is very well written, and and uh, makes sense in. Uh, a lot of places, uh. Chair, the way I look at it, we got multiple decisions to make here, and some of the, some of the more simple ones, site size, we got density. We got types of housing, maybe we should peel this off one item at a time and discuss. And because we've, we've kind of clocked shoot all over, it's hard to get kind of concise discussion here. I propose, let's talk sites. Is, you know, the point we just brought up, yeah, one and a half acre minimum, that, that does restrictions on. So, let's, we should think about sites, minimum sites, we wanna allow them for happy building either. Or we want some other project to skip.
Can, I, can either of you summarize our discussion we had the other day about this, we were talking. Through about site size, I really, we're talking about like a tiered approach. My memory is a little bit escaping me, but do you, can one of you two kind of reiterate what we were talking about, we had, we had some interesting discussion about this.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I. We, we talked, so right now we have. For an RPUD, we have a forty acre minimum, right, there's no, there's no minimum for. The RM zone, and we talked about potentially allowing, uh, you know, a twenty acre or ten acre project. Uh, but with that comes with maybe additional restrictions, maybe the density is different. The the allowance is different, uh. That was kind of the concept, we, so so that, so there, there may be, we would incentivize a larger development, we won't, we don't necessarily. Outright prohibit it, somehow through through densities, through the. You know, amenity calculation, however we want to to incentivize that, we could, we could do that.
Yeah. We can get these larger projects, like just in scale, that just opens up more opportunities for more infrastructure design. We might encourage, I don't wanna speak for you, but it's kind of a summary, so we were talking about that, like. Maybe we just think about this in a tiered approach, where we just have thresholds that. If you process that opens up extra opportunity for certain things. But if you don't process, you're limited to this, I don't know what this looks like yet. But we were thinking about that, with the hopes that that would encourage landowners, maybe you don't have a solidated ownership group. Right, but maybe discuss and say, oh, if we come together and come at this as a project, now we get. Thirty acres to our project, which allows us to have all this extra opportunity for development, whatever that is. I thought that was an interesting concept in our meeting, I don't know how, what that looks like in practice or execution, but. Um, that was kind of the summary of that.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I think we talked of open space, you can even discuss proximity to arterial uh, roads. Or distance from arterial roads, you know, you might not want. A big clustered sub subdivision in the, right in the middle of some rural area of Nibbly that doesn't have really good access. Infrastructure already.
Yeah. And like, this is where like, I I certainly don't have. In this realm yet, but at some point, is this something like, we need to maybe workshop with maybe a few members of the planning commission, a few members council, and just see what the viability is. Something like this, if even there's a appetite for it, or can we just say, we talked about it, couldn't come to a resolution, so.
Then I do a little way solid, um, tactics is where they have. Of stay allowed. Exceptional exceptions around, you know, the the track stations and things like that. So that kind of goes back to the point, make sure, like, yeah, I don't think you can open up everywhere. Because, yeah, we may not have any structural place to do it.
Right.
So, but kind of going back, if you're okay with it, like, do we, we wanna have a discussion on the site size, or. I'm fine, I'm open to any discussion, I think site size should be, I mean, it seems like the starting point of discussion. Does a five acre parcel make sense for us? Couldn't realistically do to make it a good project for the city, right, things like that. Now, I don't know how to hash through the details of the specific conversation, but. I guess maybe what would do, does the commission feel like there would be a. Size that just is a nonstarter? In this context, and we can start there.
I don't know, I think five acres, that's. That's quite a few multiples in a small area. But under the time, it needs to be. Like appropriate. Or infrastructure, but. That's still fifty.
Yeah. And 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 just to come back, maybe to circle the reason why you're here too, is. You know, the application, just geographically, is this thing, right, upon something, so it's really hard. To get a context around what that would look like, just, it could be an island in itself, right? I know it does fit within the transition zone of industrial, I think that was. The discussion in the beginning. But I just feel like I said, like, yeah, let's talk about site size, but eventually we need to just decide like. Just gonna table this, or, because staff's been, you know, we need to make sure that we give our direction and locate.
On on site size, sorry to kind of flip this on the, on the head, but one thing that was discussed with the RM zone. Uh, previously, and I. Honestly can't remember if it was with planning commissioner, city council, or or just with with staff ahead of time, was not a minimum. But actually a ma- maximum acreage, because there was some concern of just concentrating. Higher density in one, you know, in one part of town or one location, and and where the RM zone. It doesn't, like the RPUD, require mix of housing types, maybe we don't want, you know, a hundred acre. Apartment complex, uh. I'm I'm just saying that when we talk about site size. It may, in, and there may be an appropriate, not just minimum, but maximum.
If you're gonna do maximum. Ridge line. That's, that's forty acres.
Yeah, I mean ridge line's almost a hundred acres, but ridge line park.
Yeah, you're looking, you're looking somewhere.
Right.
Well.
It's hard to calculate a maximum. A maximum site size because. I I'm trying to stay on top, I'm just talking about site size.
Yeah, uh.
Because one owner can develop ten acres here, and the adjacent's another ten acres, we can end up with the exact same thing.
It's different owners. Good point.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of a minimum site size, and frankly, there's just economies of scale, if you're not gonna get a hundred acre. Twenty, ten, twenty units, you have your twelve, you can cash it off. That's half the population cashed off.
Yeah.
You you got the economies of scale, but even if we ended up with a twenty or thirty acre. If the intent of this is to have mobile transportation plan and resources and bus stops and anything else, you concentrate people. If we want commercially, you concentrate people who are on commercial. So. I I think that actually works better than having smaller than, say, a five or ten acre project, because then you, you just don't have the scale. To really efficiently manage that area and that space. You know, you get, you get below five acres, like, I I'm not in favor of, I'm in favor of fourplexes for senior living as part of large project. I'm not in favor of a fourplex on the city block. Kind of like, like I rented theirs. Because you isolate that when it's set, it becomes very difficult to move.
I guess I'm thinking of the little developers, some of you on the planning commission have. Been developers. So what do you think, those of you. I I was thinking about the, the, the smaller developer in less resources.
Well, uh, in in my discussion, my, my consideration is just not for small developer. I think we want to develop, we wanna work with professional projects, professional developers, but ultimately, what, what. Product is being created is the overall feel of our city. You know, the, I think a small developer doing, you know, a a quarter acre development on the fourplex. Doesn't fit into the residential environment of. Like, it's, it's gonna be hard to accommodate. And and overall, or, or the plan.
I guess I'm thinking about the economy, how unstable this, okay, and just, and the, the, um. I mean, in two thousand eight, some of the large developers in that business, right? So it might be nice to have some kind of weight or. You know, less projects that are, are less. Have, have more flexibility to do unique projects.
So I have had a handful of conversations with people that have, they bought. A single family home on an acre, acre and a half, right, there's, there's, those are kind of spattered throughout. Thirty two hundred south, along, along the highway, and they say, you know, I'd really like to put in a triplex or fourplex here. It would help my family, what, and that's, it's just a flat out no, like, there's no way to do something like that. Anywhere in Nibbly, like, until you get to that large scale, and I think Tyler, you're saying that's kind of what we're trying to avoid, but are we trying to avoid that in all? At all costs, in all situations, there's some place for that type of thing to happen, or are we just saying, no, you have, you have your. One acre lot, and that's what, that's what you get, you know? Well, depends on the zoning, right, that, that's the thing, is our zoning's very restrictive, our, our underlying residential zoning. It's, I mean, R two A, potentially, but for a lot of them, you know. If if they've got R two, R one, R one A zoning, and they've got a small pro- property. They, they basically, they've got a, they've got a single family home with a, with a bunch of land around it, you know?
If they resell it.
They could request that. The frontage is an issue too, yeah. Yeah, the frontage does become an issue. Most of them it doesn't, right, but. If you want. Two eighty U's, or yeah?
Inwards, we're getting, we're getting off topic.
Right, I I was just trying to get to where where Karina was saying, like, a small scale project, it really is. Difficult to to do under our current regulatory environment, to some, like a, like a fourplex or something like that.
It's almost not like. Whether, whether we could flesh this out in a general plan, public comment, finding specific nodes throughout the community where you have. A cross section of streets that makes sense, that you could entertain unique development or infill or whatever, right, things like that. Um, but what I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but kind of what I'm hearing is. Our RM, we, we're still basically in the context of spot applying where it makes sense. That fair to say?
It's not on the land chart back, is it, we're not developing.
No, we, we basically, uh, if someone can apply to amend the map and include a parcel. And then it would be a.
Besides the west.
Yeah, so however, I'm putting notes down, so I'm five is where we love the old place. So we're still stuck on where, what size? Oh, you mean, okay, yes, we are.
What size, yeah.
Oh, because. Whatever size it is, they have. And. It's expensive, I'm just thinking how expensive this, Utah's like top three most expensive state in the nation.
So. Again, so if you have a five acre parcel, you gotta have one and a half acres of open space, you got two and a half acres. Um, sorry, three and a half acres will work with that, and use the acre, that's thirty five homes, I think one and a half acre open space is. A good idea for thirty five. No, because you know, it's ten years per development, so if you carve off one and a half, you have three and a half acres of development. You don't count the, the donated space.
Well, you you do, actually, you would count. It, you wouldn't count the right of ways, and you wouldn't count sensitive lands, but you do count it in the calculation of. Of developable. The open space portion, but but it's, but it is gonna be lower, it's not gonna be, it's most likely not going to be five, unless. You're not putting any streets in, right, and you're, and and you have no sensitive land. Yeah.
You still have to be able to park thirty five. Vehicles. So I guess there's two ways you can do it, open space, and I have a consensus of commission in city council in the year system. Where, when we've been willing to give up. Uh, give and allow more density, we wanted to make sure we got open space to count that. One of the discussions we had in last meeting was. Uh, in a little open space, do we allow provision where when additional funds are spent, or additional impact fees? For the overall park last year. So, like, if, okay, size, you have one and a half acres, moving out, limiting back from the size of the valve at that point. Now, if you wanna get rid of the one and a half acre park, uh, X amount per developable unit above the minimum. To go to the overall park improvement plan, because we're, we're, we're picking up lots of large open charts of lands on the city to do some incredible parks, and. We just don't have enough building.
Right.
And pocket parks. Are kind of useless.
Yes, they are.
It's extra maintenance for the city. So, we leave the one and a half acres there, and let the mathematics determine the size and scale of the project. And then build in a provision to offset the open space to, for funds to be applied in general.
Just to feel Lou.
Yeah. And and I like Troy's idea of dropping some of the amenities as well, just. Flash pattern the light. Chill on. See. Those things, frankly. That's why we have city parks for. Any other thoughts? Any other thoughts?
I I agree with Tyler on. You know, yeah, space. As a bigger part and the one maintained part, I'd be more universal than.
And it's something that.
Park it, one acre parks here and there.
And the 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 community.
Yeah.
Good, so do is that overall or the remaining? Like, once we hit. X number of units now you have to do. You can't do.
I mean, I I would say if if Rindu Fian Lu of maybe maybe there's a base density or a base open space that. That you need to provide at least some level of open space. Uh, but but you can reduce it to a certain level, like we say thirty five percent, well, maybe you can reduce it to as much as ten percent. By using a feed loop, that's that's one idea.
Perhaps geographically, a development's right next door to a city open space already. Perhaps we can have some tier or or an evaluation process that allows. No, no park in that development if it's right next door to the.
I actually, I think. And that. Specify the distance towards a future master plan park for the people, so if you're within. A thousand feet of. The big one that's going to be here, then you can do a payment level. But then that's a walkable distance to to access the existing parts. And if you're if you're not within a certain amount of distance of an existing park or future time work, then the D, uh, I mean, the payment.
So the the idea there is we're still. We're still providing open space in close proximity to all these spaces as we grow. Uh, but. But but if we already have something there. You know, why why not improve what we have rather rather than just spread it out?
The twelve west though is.
I think thirty five. Yeah, yeah. Right.
But it could build up. Off of. Well, uh, uh. Four plus, there's no, there's no plan heart there. Yeah, and it reduces the strain on the city, forget that. The always be that you have to see that one more place to get if you're consolidating. Well, a thirty five acre park well improved is is better than.
That's the one on the east west is about one acre. I don't have any receipt anymore. Couple big big tables. But it's okay if anyone.
That's the one I think of.
If it's well maintained. It's full of weeds maybe.
Yeah, minimum acre size, we stick with. Park area and let the park area be the limiting factor of.
It's pushing open. Looking for crawl. It's it's good. Yeah, I think.
So you don't see it, you don't see a problem with uh just having the R P V and open space and not R M or or? Or what?
It's it's. It's true.
I think. I think a lot of the. You know, I think I think the key is. And then we're going to go through the general plan and update the future land use map, but keying in on. High density, media, what do we mean by high density? What do we mean by medium density? What's that continuum? And. And that that really should be the basis for. Future zoning decisions. I mean, yes, it can technically be, it could be applied everywhere, but if we're designating as low density residential. And someone comes in with a. With an application for R M and that's clearly a high density zone. Probably going to get denied. So. I don't know, I I I think I think. The general plan process will be a good a good process to, I mean, our. Our code has changed quite a bit since the last general plan, we didn't have R P U D. We didn't have the open space subdivision wasn't really the same as it is now. And and so. I hope, I you know, we can use it as an opportunity to articulate that better. Of where do we want? You know, an o- open space subdivision type development, where do we where are we okay with these higher density developments?
Yeah, to me, I think we let the fellow comment period in the general plan. Basically say this is where the citizens in Nibbly say they're comfortable having this, we intend to buy this. That and we just let it be what it is.
But I think I think a lot of the things that Troy mentioned, so this this code is patterned after the R P U D code, so we could. And we go about this a few ways, but if 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 there's some agreement with some of those changes. And I I think there's some good points there and and staff feels there are some. Some things that could be adjusted with with the existing code. They could apply to both um an R M or an R P U D or. You know, they could be put under the same umbrella really, but.
Well, I think I'm just gonna, we're we're gonna just table. And to unless somebody comes up with something tangible to re- reassess in the future. I'm going to say we're just gonna table R M.
Yeah.
Is that is that what?
Is that okay with everyone?
Are we okay with the driveway thing? Like, that was that was a big concern for staff, driveway thing. She could. Two. I mean, like, if we want to keep it up so we can say where it goes or not, but like. There's still the driveway thing.
Well, because. West thousand, they proposed hundred.
It's. The our plow drivers. They hate it because they get toward that end and they hit, they clip that wing and it it's rough on. But I guess I'll ask the question, do we want to? Hold off and then be in a situation when someone comes, we're right back where we were in this single instance, or do we want to be proactive and? Well, we we talked about some really nice things, so payment and loo, I love it. You know, the driveway thing, it's another green. Do you want staff to research a couple of these things and?
Yeah, I think. Some of the tweaking that we discussed.
But it sounds like we don't have a minimum area yet, size.
We have the R M. I'd like to go to the town and allow on those items. That's great. I I would like to use template of. Downhole. Overlay. For more. But still, I mean, it makes.
Yeah.
Again, and I'm not, I'm not as disturbed with. A stack of condo next to a residential home, if it's the developer making the choice, I don't want a stack condo mixed with an existing city foundation. That choice is for sure. So I also still like the idea of making this a legislative decision instead of administrative. Because the legislative, we don't have to write an ordinance in every place. The city can just say we're a driveway onto whatever we want to do. And so so it becomes more of a direct negotiation of development of both the roads versus um. You know, having unintended consequences. You know, the drivers.
So I mean, I I think I think if we're going to. More of an overlay R P U D, that's I guess that's the question, do we structure this? As. And we talked about tiers, right, of of different levels. Is that something we look at researching, pursuing if there's some way we can structure this where it isn't our it? We basically remove R M and it's just an R P U D. But just different levels of R P U D.
And and I think it's got to include job team, the T B R. Over like the R P U D is five inches thicker.
Right. Yeah, so. All those thresholds I think are. Important to look at, but I I don't know, I I don't know if others feel the same way, that 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 really the main thing with that is. The difference between legislative or administrative. Approval.
And so then the R. The R P U D subdivision is and the town. Town center overlay, those are legis- like legislative decisions. And so the benefit of that is is the city does, I'll say, like you can put X amount of units in, but we still need a road here, we still need. And I I like I like I like those quotes, I think this is a real practice, I like those maybe address. Having multiple types of housing in the development in the concentrated area, which allows. People of different income scales and diversity of of payments. Versus just having a block of.
So maybe what we do is. Um. And I'll look at Taylor, Taylor's notes, because I don't take good notes, but um. Look, look at the notes and and put together, do some research, put something together as a, you know, very rough draft of. Here's an approach we can take. Bring it back, one once we're ready, it's probably not going to be the next meeting, um. But but bring it back to the the commission. To help facilitate this discussion, you know? What what do you like, what do you not like, what do we need to change? So we have something tangible to.
I think.
To to react to.
Throw out the minimum acres. The the discussion we're having now, an R P D of good acre for you. Don't. Let's figure out what ordinance is in the graphics.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll see what we can come up with and. Go from there.
All right. Let's move on to. The last item on the agenda, agenda number four. Uh, another workshop on flag lots, do you like? Get us get us going.
Yeah, so uh, just. Just to be clear on what spurred this, uh, right, right next door, if it wasn't dark, you could see right out the window here. City has a property, um, and. The this, the city council opted to buy this property right next door, it came up for sale and they, you know. Weren't sure about expansion of this of this building. Anyway, since that time, we've done. We've done a s- uh, a study on expanding this building that really didn't take advantage of. The area next door. And and the city's now looking at the possibility of, well, maybe we just sell it, um. It, one way to sell it, you know, I mean, we could just sell it as is, but but. It's a really long, deep lot, and we've got quite a few of these on thirty two hundred south, um. They're relatively narrow, but they're really long, uh. They're. Why not allow for a flag lot in something like this? Well, our current code doesn't allow it, um. Flag lots are not allowed on arterial streets. So that's that's really the main. Impetus for this discussion, just to bring it up. At the end of the day. Please, you know, do whatever you think is best for the city, the the city with with our own land, we'll figure out what to do with it, but. Just figure it out, um. Consider not just this property, but that's what spurred this. This item was, well, we can't do it, so let's ask the commission. Is this something we want to continue? Um, I know. Other than this lot, there ha- I I do get quite a few requests from property owners. And a lot of them are on thirty two hundred, you know, some are on the highway, but um, that I just have to say, no, can't do that, you don't need frontage. Flag lots aren't allowed there. It's like two acres, it's wait, no, no, it's about an acre. A little over an acre. So, yeah. Right, but we can't subdivide it as a flag lot, because our code prohibits that. So we could sell the lot. The city could sell the lot, but we can't sell it, but there's no flag lot, we have to subdivide it, create a flag lot. So that's the main provision, um. With this one in particular, there's there's other issues and I I think, you know, that these become issues with creating flag lots in general is. The setback provisions are a little onerous, so we require. Twenty feet of pavement. And then we require. Additional width for. Uh, like a swale or stormwater, so you need thirty feet. Um. Of a stem for for your for your lot, and then you need to be ten feet setback from that stem, so. From here, when you look at, you know, right next door, we need. We need about um forty feet. We need ten feet between the house and here, and then we need an additional thirty feet, so I don't even know if it would work to get rid of this provision. Right? And and a lot and a lot of these lots. That. That is an issue where they've got enough room, they've got a little alleyway that can go right next to the house, but they can't set it back ten feet. From the house and then have. So and and you know, we we've talked about flag lots, it's been a little while, um. I don't know, I actually wasn't here the last time we had a really extensive discussion on flag lots, Ty- maybe Tyler and Brett were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What what's the what's the concern you need to trust flag lots on a church? They can't sub. Well, I, well, yes, we can't subsidize it, but what?
But why why do we want, yeah, what do? The only argument I could think of is limiting access, right? We don't want a lot of access on arterial roads. What do you think?
Done leave anything not on a terrible. There there's still something.
There there should still be some buffer. From a house to a driveway, I don't know what that would be, maybe five feet. Yeah.
Because like. It's currently eighty five.
Right.
Yeah, I I would suggest at least. Twelve foot if you're, there is a the fire safe drive requirement if you're over a hundred fifty feet deep. But you could actually, I can't remember what that width is, I think it is twenty feet. And then you have to have a hammerhead turn around if it's deeper than a hundred fifty feet by. Uh, fire code.
Okay, cool, what if it's not a hundred fifty feet deep?
Not a hundred fifty feet deep, you can treat it as a driveway. And have twelve feet, so.
I mean, do we just have fire code? Dictate that rather than.
There's a flag on up like twenty six hundred south, but it's ten feet. It's ten acres. There's only uh. Twelve with growing waste along that side of the path.
Yeah, it was probably created before the existing. Fire code restrictions, I'm I'm guessing, but yeah.
Could be. Or. Maybe not enforced, sometimes. We make mistakes as regulators. Omissions errors.
Yep. Okay, yeah.
Well, it's been in longer than twenty years, I know that. Perhaps whoever the regulator was, wasn't aware of that requirement.
Because it was recently sold in last five years.
Back to the question of why have a swell, that's probably. Just the thought not to directly run off onto the neighbor next door, just to be able to capture some. Some stormwater runoff.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess the. You know, this, this property aside. Our flag lot ordinance is, is pretty restrictive, um, I think it's well thought out, I think there's a, I think the city was trying to. Cover, you know, at the, at the time, issues that that could arise from flag, flag lots. But we've only had one flag lot proposal in the five years I've been here. And I, it hasn't been subdivided yet, by the way, they may or may not actually subdivide it. So I'm not sure how. You know, I I think there's a fear of, oh, we're gonna have a bunch of these flag lots and we don't want these. I don't, I think they're still gonna be few and far between, even if we loosen it up, kind of like what we've done with the A D U ordinance. You know, um, I think we got that really restrictive, and then we've kind of loosened it up. A little bit, and we're still not seeing a windfall of A D Us. Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. Yeah. Tell you right now, no. Yeah.
I I'd encourage you to, sorry. No, I'd encourage you to craft something that doesn't allow creating non-conforming lots, nor would allow. Adding to the non-conformity of an existing lot. If that makes sense. If it's non-conforming, you can't do this, you can't create an another non-conformity or add to a non-conformity, if that makes sense. So I guess, uh, that buffer I was talking about, the side yard setback. Now you're creating a, a lane down there, you would have, what's our side yard setback?
Ten feet.
So you'd have at least ten feet from that drive access. And then it'd be twelve foot, if you, if you decide twelve foot, that could be twenty two feet overall from the original boundary. Just thinking through how it looked.
Are you talking like if, if there's an existing non-conforming lot, we're trying to build behind it, or does a flat lot create a non?
To, to already, you know, an existing non-conforming lot. Next to another non-conforming lot. And you do want it on the second non-conforming lot, you want to put a structure by creating a flag.
With the non. You want to pull up G I S.
Or as it should said. You just cannot, if it's not performing, you can't build.
Well, the, the flag lot wouldn't be non-conforming, but.
Yeah, we wouldn't, non-conforming in what way, I guess, are you saying? Minimum, minimum lot size? Yeah, we wouldn't, we just wouldn't allow it if it didn't meet the minimum lot size. Um, unless we put some provision in here that flag lots are exempt from that, but. But no, you would need, you would at minimum need that, that amount of. Space for the lot, unless you rezone. Right, because it's a, it's a subdivision, and those lots need to meet the underlying zoning. One point three is what I'm showing, but, sorry. Is this the one, maybe you're looking at a different one? Right, yeah, the ones that I've heard from, you know, are just, if you look. I mean, I don't, I, I don't know if it's a, a lot, but. Eighth West, thirty two hundred, some of these old, old lots here, I mean, look how deep they are. Um, and they really can't, you really can't do anything with them. It's not much.
So we're probably dealing with pretty isolated bits on, instance on this, this house, house next to us.
Yeah, but it's narrow, it's narrow too, right? Um, it looks a lot like those lots. And we have a little lane, we drive back there, we just, you know. They got all their equipment back there to tear all those trees out.
And I was gonna say, like, there's other impacts as well, like. Like for this one, one point three acres, get like a. Four more houses on there, deep in like all the lots. Now, all of those come trash day, now you have. Ten. Trash cans sitting in front of that house, is it gonna fit on that, that parcel? And then they all go in the bike lane and then. There, there's other impact, sorry, I was having another.
You can have up to two. The code, the code does allow two, and then, and then we have this private lane provision, that's almost like a loophole. You just need, you just need a couple more feet. And then you can do a private lane. I, I, I guess I haven't done that research, really.
I just, I just did some research in, in the height mark, last box subdivision, basically, if. Your lot touches a bulk right away, you can put a lot. Including arterial, that's, that's kind of like the big thing with this, right, it's on an arterial, like if it's on a neighborhood street, you can't have a problem. But then, but that, and again, that one we used to solve, but there's only one driveway access. But yeah, like, so high park, if you touch the front, I think it's fifteen feet, eighteen feet, you touch the front, you can do it.
Yeah, I don't know if we need thirty feet. That seems a little wide, for if you, if you, all you, all you have is just a little house back there, but. I don't know.
But that, that's the way technically you can accomplish, if you, if it's one single bound at all, then it's. Fifteen foot right away, it's thirty. And then you can only get one house here. You have, we have a.
I've had a couple calls.
Yeah, yeah, people have asked, people have asked me that question, they buy these, they buy these houses. You know, I mean, there, there was, there was recently an A D U that was built, they, they wanted to subdivide it, they didn't want to put an A D U in. Uh, they wanted to subdivide it and sell it to their parents. They ended up building an A D U for them instead, um, but it's, it looks like a flag lot. It's just across the street here. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, they, they had, they've got a big lot, um. About an acre. I think it was this one, maybe not, no, not that one, I can't remember, I, I shouldn't point at the specific one, but. But they had, they had about an acre of land and. And yeah, they didn't, they didn't want a horse, so they wanted to build a house on there instead, you know? So, go, no, go ahead.
Would we want staff to maybe do some research on flag lot, similar cities in the valley, to see what, what their code might be before we move forward?
Come back with potential amendments or? Okay.
Well, before we do that, also the mission. We want to allow development flag lots. I would say, shoot, they, so my. Yeah, if it's. That's a tough one, if it's appropriate and access is okay, then. But thirty two hundred south is a busy road, we're kind of back a trailer on thirty two hundred south. Don't go at school's night. You look at thirty three, forty nine south, main. It's another five months, the draw box for their row. Um, so the owner of this property, what they ended up doing was. They bought a parcel next to it and then put it into an exit driveway, so it's a circular driveway instead of a. Um, just a little bit. Right in front of there, zoom by three adventures. Zoom, I don't know what that. They ended up buying the parcel next to it and made circular driveways. So we should consider provisions.
Circular driveways.
But we have to consider traffic safety back.
So some people aren't as good at back again as I am. I was back into my driveway.
Yeah.
No big deal, busy road, it's not Main Street, but.
Okay, so basically, um, move forward with the idea of flag lots, but we, let's get some information. Uh, communities. So I think, uh, that's it, um, Stan, you think for staff reports?
Uh, yeah, so city council. Uh, they, they reconsider the twenty five hundred south amendment and. Uh, they did approve the applicant's request to remove twenty five hundred south. Uh, with, with the condition that. They need restrict the property so that there's no uh, access on the twelve hundred west, so. Very long discussion. Over three hours last week, um, that's, that's what, that's where it landed. The, the general plan, uh, we, we're working on selecting a consultant, we were. I won't, I won't say who it is, because we're in contract negotiations right now, but we, we have selected someone that's gonna go in front of, uh, city council. Either next meeting or the one after, depending how long it takes to get that contract together, so we're, we're excited about that, uh. And thank Claire and Nick on help, helping on that process, uh. See, uh, the, oh, a cou- couple of trainings coming up. So Utah League of Cities and Towns is on April. Uh, like, I want to say sixteen through eighteen, I'm gonna just pull up my calendar. Yeah, so the Utah League of Cities and Towns is, the conference is actually just the seventeenth and eighteenth, but with travel. It's, you know, sixteen through eighteen. If anyone's interested in attending that one, please, please let us know before the next meeting. Uh, so I guess within the next three weeks, so we can get you signed up there, get, get hotels and everything. Uh, the A P A Utah Conference is gonna be local this year, uh, it, it's gonna be in Logan. And that is gonna be on May seventh through ninth. On the conference finding committee for that one. If anyone's interested in attending either one, either one of those, let me know, but the, I think the. A P A conference is a great opportunity where it's local, even if you can only attend a day or half a day. Uh, let me know, you, it's a, you know, the, the fee is, is. Pretty minimal, uh, considering what you get out of those, and I, I think it'll be a, a, a great conference. It's gonna be at the, uh, Mary, the courtyard Mary, is that what it is, at the? Yeah, in Logan, yeah, so. Yeah, I will, so just. Think about that, I'll, 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 yeah, I'll follow up with an email on those. That is it.
No, there's been an influx of development review, a lot of housing, uh, Richland Park, seven, eight, nine, I might have mentioned this last time too. Um, we were honed in on Halkalo getting close, I think part of that goes to city council next, on the twentieth. Was the other one, we have a commercial development, are one of our first ones.
Uh, Nibbly Coach is really close, you know?
Getting along, they, they still have to get some of the, the bonding in place and haven't really. They haven't given us water shares yet, so we're just working through those.
Did the commercial access get figured out? With the Richland Development?
Yeah, so, uh, we've deferred any improvements and they paid us five hundred.
Oh, that's, well, that was a, defer listening, but isn't there another one just to the south, that's like the commercial piece that still? We need to work through as well.
That one's still in the bone.
Same story.
Yeah, the, the way the development agreement was written, it said that it's up to the city engineers to.
Just tell them to do it.
Uh, yeah, capital projects, we have a project coming up this summer in Troy's network there, thirteen hundred west. We just had a bid opening, we had really great interest, we had fourteen bids proposed for this quarter million dollar project. The lowest bid, we can't tell you who it is yet, but I had to do some map check, but. Um, they're under the budget that we had allocated for it, and so we're, we're excited for that.
Taylor?
And just remember to email.